Good evening. We will call this January 19th, 2022, meeting of the Boulder City Planning Commission to order. The first order of business, though, is confirmation that the agenda and the notes have been published and that we have almost all members of the Planning Commission here. Ms. Benar is not able to make it, and Steve Rudd is on the phone located over there. With that, we move to the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand and join me, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is public comment. This is an initial public comment period, and any comments folks might wish to provide must be limited to items that are on the agenda for action. Each person would have up to five minutes to speak on a particular agenda item. And really, the one agenda item that we have here today is also going to be a public hearing, so you will have the opportunity to comment during that agenda item. And with that, that leads us to the first item on our--I'm sorry. I talked about a public comment period and then just skipped right by it. That's a little disrespectful. Would anybody wish to be heard at this moment? Seeing none, we'll turn it to anyone who may be streaming this meeting. And again, the call-in number is 702-589-9629. And there is a delay, so we'll give folks about a minute to call in. Hearing no calls in. We'll close the initial public comment period.
Chairman, I have written public comments to read.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
This written comment was submitted by Alan Cabellas in support of item number three. As a 24-year owner and member of Boulder Landing, owning a unit which is adjacent to one of the corners affected by this request, I am very much in favor of this project. Due to the original landscape design, hills and mounds, watering of these areas is problematic, especially on windy days, with much of the water ending up spraying the adjacent sidewalks, streets and buildings, or simply running off into the gutter. Therefore, as I stated before, I am very much in favor of this project proceeding now before the warm weather sets in once again. I hope you, the commission, will approve this water conserving project. Thank you, Alan Cabellas.
Any other comments?
No further comments.
Ah, thank you. All right. We'll proceed with agenda item number one. And I believe, staff, you have something to say on that.
Yes, item number one will not be considered tonight and no action taken, so you can move to item number two, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number two for possible action is approval of the minutes of the December 15th, 2021, regular meeting. Does anyone have any comments?
I have comments, but I move approval if no one else has any objection.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Does anyone have anything to add or to--any comments to that motion? Seeing none. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes pass as written. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to item number three for possible action, and this is variance number 21-655. This is the Boulder Landing Village HOA, Boulder Landing, Boulder City, number 65. And this is, in fact, a public hearing. It's on an applicant--application for a variance for an R3 multiple-family development in the general commercial zone to permit landscape changes which result in a reduction from the required landscape points per Title 11, Chapter 25 of the Boulder City Code. With that, staff, please provide their report.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Michael Mays, Community Development Director, for the record. Boulder Landing Village HOA is seeking a variance from the required landscaping regulations in order to remove sod and replace with rocks and water-efficient landscaping shrubs. As the staff report notes, the trees that are there would remain in place. Because of how our landscaping regulations apply points and because it's weighted heavily on sod, it is difficult for the HOA to be able to replace points from sod to other alternative landscaping options and not seek a variance from the Planning Commission this evening. In fact, the Planning Commission approved a variance for this development as part of Phase 1 in 2019 for the very same reasons. As also noted in the staff report, the staff is working on a text amendment to bring before the Planning Commission over the next couple of months to be able to address the fact that sod is not an appropriate use type of landscaping for these types of developments and to be able to allow for developments like this one, Boulder Landing Village, to be able to make modifications in the future that will comply with state regulations and, you know, providing for appropriate water and desert-tolerant landscaping without having to seek a variance. Staff has prepared a draft findings of fact. It's on page 20 of your report for your consideration. And staff can certainly answer any questions. And Judith Barnes is here to represent the applicant.
Thank you.
We'll get to that hearing in just a moment. Thank you, though. Does anyone have any questions of staff? I have a question, Mr. Mays. The revised landscaping ordinance that you referred to, that the city is developing at this point, is it going to essentially mirror SNWA's guidelines or recommendations at this point? And further, would the variance being requested by the applicant on this matter, would it meet our revised ordinance? Or are we--I should say, are we far enough to answer those questions with the revisions?
With the understanding that each condominium association, townhome development within the community is going to be required to assess the same type of situation in the next several years, the intent is for the updated landscaping ordinance to be able to allow for HOAs to replace landscaping without seeking a variance.
Ah, very good. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Is the applicant here and would they like to be heard on this matter? If so, please step forward and state your name.
Thank you, sir. My name is Judith Barnes. I'm an owner and resident of Boulder Landing Village, and thank you for all your help on this. Just a couple of points I'd like to make. One of them is that by--we're working hand-in-hand with Southern Nevada Water Authority and also our landscaper Centercut, who helped us with Phase 1 that was approved by the Planning Commission. And we're going to take advantage of the $3 per square foot rebate that's offered now. So taking out 7,000 square feet of corner things that are sloped and the water's running down, as Alan Cabellas had previously stated, that would allow us to receive about $21,000 toward our $45,000 to $50,000 expense just to convert those nine corners. And it's mandatory, there is a new Nevada state bill, and it was--oh, dear. Oh, here it is. Nevada State Bill AB 356, where it's going to be mandatory, we're all multifamily units, remove all nonessential grass. So that means--and the only people that walk on our grass are the people that mow it and the people that walk their dogs. That's it. We have the bike path that's a half a block away, and that's all I--that's all I need to input. Do you have any questions that you might have for me?
I do.
Okay.
I believe I read this in the package, but I just wanted to verify that the revisions that you're planning to make, once you remove the sod--
Yes, sir.
--and the vegetation that you're planning to replace or put in its place, would that meet the SNWA--the current SNWA guidelines?
Oh, absolutely. We have to meet with them. And plus, Phase 1, we removed turf, and we replaced it with lantana, red yuccas, Mediterranean palms, decorative rock, and boulders for Boulder Landing. And so it--and it's been in for two and a half years, and everyone loves it. We've gotten a lot of compliments of it, and we're going to continue to can--to put that throughout our landscape. So according to Southern Nevada Water Authority, when they came out and measured, they said that the 10 big trees that are on the corner, that they would more than cover the canopy requirement by Southern Nevada Water Authority, which is 50% canopy coverage for every square foot of grass you removed. And she said it more than covered that. But Boulder Landing Village wants to complete the corners with the like landscape that we put in with Phase 1 and that we will consider. We had a master landscape plan with three phases. This will be Phase 2. And when we were here in 2019, the Planning Commission Board commended us for being proactive and trying to conserve water in Boulder Landing, in Boulder City.
Right. All right. Please proceed. Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's my question. Oh, wait, one second. We have more questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I do have one question. Just, I'd like to confirm. I'm not sure if I read it in the package or not, but have you already submitted your application and got approval for your landscape plan from the SNWA?
Yes, sir. They came out and measured everything, and then--we work with Centercut Landscaping Company. They were landscaper. They did Phase 1, and they work hand-in-hand with Southern Nevada Water Authority. And we've been in contact with them, and that's why we're here. Southern Nevada Water Authority said we needed approval from Boulder City in order to continue with the variance and to continue with Phase 2.
Okay, so there literally has been a plan submitted to them that they have approved.
I believe so, yes. They haven't approved it because we haven't gotten the approval from Boulder City.
That should be irrelevant, but okay. Because until the plan is approved, the Southern Nevada Water Authority won't really go forward with--
Well, we won't take out any grass until they do approve it, because we can't afford to do it without the rebate.
No, I--that's not my question, but I understand that.
Yeah, but we will--we have our master landscape plan, and we will adhere to it, which adheres to the Southern Nevada Water Authority requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Very good. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
That brings us to the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Does anyone else in the audience wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing--seeing none, we'll move to anyone who is streaming this. Please call with your comments to number 702-589-9629. And again, with that delay, we'll--we'll give a moment of time. Okay, hearing no comments. We'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission. Does anyone have any comments or wish to make a motion? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to--or, Mr. Biaski, were you getting ready to make a comment or--
I was going to make a motion.
Ah, okay. Well, I would make a motion to-- to approve variance 21-655 as written. Pardon me.
Sorry. Just if we could include reference to the findings contained on page 20. And the condition.
Yes, of course, of course. Thank you very much. Ah, thanks. We'll start that one over again. I'd make a motion to approve this variance with the conditions as noted in the staff report. And the conditions and findings as noted in the staff report. Thank you very much for coaching me through. All right, do we--
We have to have a second on the motion before--
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I just want to make sure we've got this. It really just meets ours and-- and of course, it requires that you meet the terms of your own description, which does include reference to the SNWA guidelines, so you're covered with that. Very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second, a motion to approve and a second. Does anyone have any comments?
All right. Just to net, we're conditionally approving it based on the conditions in the thing, that's all.
Good point. Good point. Thank you. All right. With that, let's bring it to vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All--it approved with unanimous approval. And so you're very welcome. So that brings us to agenda item number four for possible action, and this is kind of a continuation or a--yeah, I'll say it's a continuation of a discussion on potential future agenda items or items for training and including possible topics for workshops. And Michael, do you have anything you'd like to lead us in with?
Well, just that this was at the request of the Planning Commission, and so we agendize this for this meeting. It's your opportunity to provide guidance to staff on training opportunities that the Planning Commission would like to focus on for 2022.
Very good. I thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff before we jump into kind of listing our thoughts? So I guess we could go right to just simply listing what we would like to discuss, hear more about, get to receive training on in this upcoming year. Anyone want to take a start at this? I--well, I'm going to just--I guess at this point, we're going to list with whatever level of detail I presume commissioners that you'd like to provide with your suggested topic.
And maybe, Mr. Chairman, to kind of help frame the issue for the commission. So are there areas of planning, planning law, procedures, city code, that you would like to have a more in-depth discussion on? And this would be an opportunity for staff to prepare some background information regarding that subject for the Planning Commission to discuss it. And the objective is to raise understanding and awareness on different issues. It may be a topical issue. So for example, at the last meeting, I highlighted what we think will be a couple of the issues that the Planning Commission is going to be tackling in 2022. Are there other areas that maybe you've heard something about, you'd like to learn more about, more information that would pertain to your role as planning commissioners? Procedural questions. We could, for example, in the future, have the city attorney attend, and if you had some questions regarding, you know, how your role and how that works with respect to the city code and NRS, that would be another opportunity as well. Again, follow-up from last month's meeting, there was an indication that the Planning Commission would like the opportunity to further discuss certain issues. And so by you giving us some direction on those topics and assuming it's a manageable list, then that would be our charge to work on those through the coming year.
Very good. Commissioner Biaski, I see you look very well-prepared.
And-- I wouldn't say that I'm well-prepared, but I do have a few thoughts that I will throw out there.
Very good.
I kind of touched on them last week, but I've been trying to figure out how to really characterize it in a way that not a--not a comment as much as, is there something that we really should learn more about? And I think the--maybe the piece of what I was talking about last week, when I addressed this whole issue of trying to do a major update to the master plan for the city, as--and you commented, of course, there are issues there as to costs to do it and everything else. However, I think related to that specific comment, there is some training that might be appropriate. When I was reading through the NRS, they talked about a comprehensive regional plan. I'm not sure I fully understand what that is. But to me, the comprehensive regional plan that I took away had a lot to do with how Boulder City fits in. And that struck me as being why I keep putting a little emphasis on an updated master plan, because I don't know that the city--and now I'm commenting, I shouldn't do that, but just as an explanation of what I think I'm looking for. I think the city has to have a very good idea of what our plan is for the entire developable area. Now, yes, we have it in the current plan, but it hasn't been really fully updated and blessed by the entire population in addressing what I think are some really major regional issues. We've pieced--we partially addressed it. So if I bring it back to a training question, I'm just trying to better understand this comprehensive regional plan and how our city fits in or where the commission, whatever fits into that. A second piece of what I brought up also was an interesting point and had to do with the annual review report that theoretically it looked like Planning Commission is supposed to do. I'm not--I've not seen us do it. I don't know if it's a real requirement. It sure sounds like something that makes sense, because it would do things like what we're talking about right now. The commission, after seeing, you know, operating for years and maybe seeing things that have come up, the annual report might just say, hey, here are some considerations we should be looking at. So it might be a way to put into--kind of cast a process, and I think a new process that would give us the ability to do what we're doing right now, but on an annual basis. And I'm not sure it's a big deal. It's just as much as it's just a kind of a check, you know, a line in the sand to talk about it. The third area, which doesn't relate to that, I have a personal thing from what I have seen come up, and that has to do with rental properties, particularly short-term rental properties. And I'm not--I think there's some stuff that we need to better understand and maybe as in--some of the comments that might also be, how do we maybe consider doing some additions to our code? But again, that's just part of any training discussion. You have the ability to also comment as to possible things to consider for the future. How does that sound?
Well, I think it covers actually two of the items I had listed out. My listing was very cursory, but you certainly covered a couple of them. You know, we were planning to get into a more detailed master plan discussion, and I think Commissioner Biaski has kind of hit on a few points that I certainly have some questions about. Our role within the master plan is just kind of an addendum to that, how we fit in and, you know, will there be more opportunities for actual planning within the master plan? And since I'm talking, I'll just go through the--about the only other thing I have is it'd be nice to hear from, I think, the city attorney on a matter of recusals and under what circumstances we should or shouldn't worry about recusing ourselves from various items. You know, I know that many of us here face that, and we'd like to be able to make, I think, those decisions based on kind of a uniform set of--a uniform understanding. I think with almost--so moving on to my next item, I think with almost any commission impaneled within this community, it's always good to get what becomes kind of a semi-annual, let's say, a PowerPoint on Robert's Rules of Order. I mean, that's a pretty simple one. We've all seen-- We've, we've all seen the PowerPoint in the past, I think, but it never hurts to just have a quick reminder. It's not something that we need to belabor. I'm not sure how to even address this one, but I know I'm not the only one here who has thought about this, but the, the five variance criteria, I think it's criteria three and four. In essence, I think I'd just like to have an opportunity to discuss and see kind of what the value is of those couple. I mean, they have some obvious value, but is, are there criteria that could be more germane to many of the kind of single-family homeowner issues that we deal with? You know, I think clearly they fit within the master plan, but anyway, I just, I think we'd like to have a little opportunity for discussion on variance criteria. You hit short-term rentals. I think that's, that's about it for me. Next, Mr. Marvin?
Yeah, the, I guess the one area that I might have also suggested is the, the gold standard of the criteria for variances, it's been floating around for 50 or 60 years, and whether or not that, that can be looked at in a more quantitative manner. And that might entail looking at beyond, beyond the scope of Reno and Henderson and, and Las Vegas, in terms of what's occurring elsewhere.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, any other suggestions?
Yeah, I'd like to do something on, you know, the, the quantity of variances that, you know, when it becomes a text amendment, you know, some, some stuff like that.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can reiterate what I've heard, and maybe ask the Planning Commission to prioritize the list, then that'll give staff direction on which of these to tackle first, and start doing work and background. One of the things I heard from several of you is, and I guess the way I understood what you were saying, is you were looking for best practices on how other jurisdictions, not necessarily in Nevada, but how other jurisdictions handle some of these issues. So I think one of the things that we can do as staff is do that research, you know, whether it is short-term rentals, regulations, the variance criteria, that these are things that we can go and seek out information about how other communities handle it, which would give you a better understanding of how it's addressed, which could then be, in the future, an impetus for a potential text amendment. So these are training opportunities to help arm you with more information about best practices across the country. So with that, obviously, the whole topic of variances, the topic of short-term rentals, you had asked about guidance from the city attorney regarding recusals, an update on Robert's Rules, a discussion regarding the city's comprehensive plan and the NRS provision that addresses implementation of the plan. I think that as part of that training exercise, a great opportunity is to bring forward the action items contained within our master plan with respect to that, and elevate the understanding for the Planning Commission for that. And then asking about the regional plan, that's the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan. I can reach out to SNS and maybe bring somebody who can do a presentation regarding the regional plan, and provide information on that as well. So I see that as six items, some of them that may be relatively easy to combine with others, but if, you know, you can give me a sense of priorities, then that'll give us what we need to move forward and respond to those needs.
One additional thought, or, and you can help me on this one, and it's related, like to the variances, and that's conditional uses. I wonder, obviously, we've had a little bit of that come up here recently in a couple of hearings, but at the same token, it may be, is there, are there other opportunities or areas within conditional uses, as the code defines them, that perhaps need clarification? And this might be really one, not just from a standpoint of us learning, is, does the city, does the development, your, your group feel like there are other areas that should be considered at this time for better update or clarification? And/or even just training in general of how, how we should be interpreting conditional uses? Is that?
Yeah, we could, we could certainly look at additional training in that area. Mr. Lassa?
Mr. Chairman, one more thing to, maybe we can get feedback from the city attorney on regarding SB 150 that just passed in the last legislative session regarding tiny homes and how that's going to affect Boulder City, because that seems to be coming down the pipeline.
Tiny, tiny homes?
Tiny homes.
Yeah, as part of my presentation last month, that is one of the things that we will need to address as a community by 2024. So staff will be working on a proposed text amendment that responds to SB 150, and we'll be bringing that to you. But maybe in advance of that, we could do a training opportunity on best practices for tiny homes across the country, so that will give you that additional information.
So if it would be all right with the commission, let me just kind of throw out a first scratch at prioritizing. If that seems reasonable, then we can kick it around. Before I do that, though, I'm wondering if short-term rentals and SB 150 tiny homes could be handled kind of together? Would that make sense? Seems to be kind of a, a general, it might be, and if not, and it's no issue to me, we could have multiple training sessions. I think as we get to short-term rentals, it'd be curi, I think many of us would be curi, I'd be curious to know how other municipalities handle that as well. But as far as priority is concerned, I would at least put the top two as the master plan discussion and the variance/conditional use permit discussion, since those are things we certainly deal with on a fairly regular basis. So that'd be my, my suggestion, those would be one and two. I'll just be honest, that Robert Rule of Order, that falls pretty low for me, we've all heard it, but I think it, it just could be a quick one, but it doesn't have to be a high priority. So master plan, variance, short-term rentals, tiny homes, recusals. Maybe the recusal is such a quick thing that we could put it, that could be sandwiched in pretty, pretty easily, you know? Not that it has the highest priority, but it might be something quick enough and easy enough to do, that it could happen sooner rather than later, while you're researching master plan and variance and that sort of thing. So I guess what I'm suggesting is master plan, variance, variance/conditional use criteria, and then going on to short-term rentals and tiny homes, kind of in that order. But I, I'm not wedded to that, I'm just kind of putting out a straw man there for folks to think about.
Another consideration, and since we've really just brought these topics up for Michael to consider and to kind of, I look at it, you almost have to come up with a kind of a firm outline, and almost a syllabus of what you think you're going to cover. So if you, you know, if you identify these areas and then just like a, I forget, there's an actual term for it, but you create like a syllabus, meaning a paragraph or a couple sentences that explain what it is you'll cover, then I think we would just, next time, look at that and then say, here's number one, is there something we need to perhaps add or clarify, and then prioritize it off of that list, so that we kind of have a better feel exactly what we're doing. Because you, once you've created that, you'll have an automatic, some things could be grouped, some things just by virtue of what they are, won't take that long, as, as already mentioned. So just a thought, put all this together, put a little meat to what each one would cover, even possibly an estimated time, I don't know, honestly. And then we look at that and get back to you with, maybe at the next session with an actual, my thought.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. Any further thoughts on the matter, any discussion? Well, if that is something staff could undertake, and would it make any sense, Michael, if, if you were to try and put a list like that together, well, so that I guess it would be in our next package, and then we could just say a nay and prioritize in that meeting and be kind of allowing you guys to start moving forward?
Yep, that would give us the direction on what to work on, you'll have a better understanding of what we would cover with each of the topics, and, and then you can prioritize.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you, each of you, for your, for your thoughts on that. Let's see, so that brings us to agenda item number five, monthly progress report on development allotments.
Nothing to report?
All righty, thank you. And last item is public comment, and so this is the final public comment opportunity. Each person have five minutes to speak. Comments made at this point can be on any, on any subject. And we'll just hold for a half a minute to see if anyone online would like to be heard Oh goodness, forgot to give the number. Well, we'll hope they remember it. All right, hearing no comments, I'd like to conclude the, the January 15th, I'm sorry, the January 19th meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you all for your attention this evening, and I'm impressed that we all made it at 5:00. We all made the shift. So anyway, I hereby close the meeting, thank you.